Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Prior to our organizational meeting being called to order, we're going to ask for a moment of silence as former Commissioner Robert Baird lost his, he's had a lot of health issues recently and unfortunately lost his battle. He passed away this past Saturday. So we request a moment of silence. Thank you. With that, I will turn the chair over to Mr. Brennan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dan Brennan. I'm the zoning enforcement officer for the town of Stratford. Tonight, I would like to call the organizational meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I informed the commission earlier that the first order of business would be the election of a new chairman. Is there a motion for a new chair?
Mr. Temporary Chairman, I make a motion to elect Gavin Forrester as chairman of the ZBA.
Is there a second?
I second.
Is there any other motion for...
Ms. Doolan, unfortunately, you're not an elected member. You can't vote on this one, so you can't make a second. Second by...
Thank you, Renee. Any motions for anyone else? Without hearing any, can I have a motion to close the nomination?
Motion to close nominations.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
And we'll take just a roll call vote. Mr. Forrester?
Oh, yes, Mr. Forrester.
Ms. Gibson? Ms. Whitlam?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Aye.
With that, our new chairman for the year of 2023 is Gavin Forrester.
And I thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your support. Thank you very much. Next item of business, we need to have a vice chair. So the next order of business will be nominations for vice chair.
I will make a motion for Dave Llewellyn, Lou Allen.
We have a motion...
Mr. Llewellyn to be vice chairman of the ZBA.
I'll second the motion.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing done, the chair will entertain a motion to close. Motion by Mr. Llewellyn. Second by Ms. Whitlam. Roll call vote. Mr. Llewellyn?
Aye.
Ms. Whitlam?
Aye.
Ms. Gibson?
Aye.
Mr. Forrester votes yes. Motion passes 4-0. Congratulations, Mr. Llewellyn.
Thank you all.
Okay, we will now go into the public hearing. Just getting started, prior, if anyone has not appeared before the body before, real quick synopsis, petitioner will be called, make their presentation. Members of the commission will have an opportunity to ask questions. Then we'll ask for anyone who's in favor of the petition, anyone who speaks against the petition, and then the public hearing will be adjourned on that particular item. That having been said, I will ask newly-elected vice chair, Mr. Llewellyn, if you would be so kind as to read item number three, actually, item number one, 3 Hickey Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first item is 3 Hickey Street Lot-B. It's the petition of Gary Tank seeking a site plan review in variance of Section 5.1.2, lot area per dwelling unit, to construct a two-family dwelling in an RM-1 zone. The indicated hardship is ambiguous zoning wording, which makes development in full accordance with the regulations extremely difficult for this permitted use.
Is the petitioner or their representative present? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is David DiCilio. I live at 6020 Main Street, Putney, Stratford, Connecticut. I am here tonight to present to the zoning board of appeals the application of my client, Mr. Gary Tank, for a waiver of Section 5.1.2, which requires 5,000 square feet of land for each dwelling unit of a two-family home in an RM-1 zone. Mr. Tank is a local builder who resides at 586 Bridgeview Place in Stratford, Connecticut, and notice of this application was mailed to neighbors per requirements, and a sign has been posted on the property also per requirements, and those receipts were submitted to Mr. Brennan. With the permission of the chairman, I'd like to hand out a couple of exhibits to follow along during my presentation.
Without objection.
Let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4. That should be enough to get around.
And before we proceed, I just want to, for the record indicate, Ms. Doolan will be sitting in for the vacant seat.
Wait to have those distributed. Okay, so on exhibit number one, I have the first two exhibits on the first page. You'll see a photograph of the lot in question. For any of you who have not had the opportunity to drive by it, Hickey Street is a short street with four, I guess around four building lots on either side of the road. Exhibit number two is basically me turning 90 degrees to the end of the street, and you'll see there's a warehouse building there. I'm not, I don't believe that warehouse building is accessed via Hickey. However, it's a pretty big warehouse. I think it's in the, you know, 50,000 to 100,000 square feet range in size. Exhibit number three, on the next page, is me turning 180 degrees and looking back towards Surf Avenue. And past Surf Avenue is St. Michael Cemetery, and the lot in question would be if I, you know, stuck my right hand out at that particular spot. So that's just a couple photos. Exhibit four, on the next page, and I want to apologize because we submitted a large format copy, but when I brought it down, it's hard to see. I have larger, blown-up exhibits following. But is the site plan, and you'll see in blue is what's proposed, is a two-family home with two separate driveways for each home, one to the left and one to the right on Hickey. Now, what's important on this particular exhibit is, on the top left, it's in small print, as required, there's a zoning standards table, which stipulates what the size of the lot must be, what the width of the lot must be, what the depth of the lot must be, what the side yard setbacks must be, what the height maximum is. This particular application is 100% in conformance with every single standard that is in this RM-1 zone. What we're here to discuss tonight is, I guess, the zoning regulations were amended that are in conflict with one another, which I will explain to you in a little bit more detail in a moment. Exhibit five is a larger site plan, so it's easier to see. And you can see the side-by-side two-family house. I highlighted the building setback line on this particular exhibit, so you can see there's plenty of room for this particular structure. Now, whether you build a one-family, a two-family, or a three-family, it's a RM-1 zone, which is a multifamily zone, as long as you're within that box, you meet the standard. So the lot is certainly large enough to accommodate the proposed house. Exhibit number six is a artist's rendering of the proposed dwelling. You'll see there's, you know, basically side-by-side two-family house. I submitted with the application floor plans, but I didn't include them in the exhibits, but your basic 1,200-square-foot apartments, each with their separate entrance and a nice little front porch. Now, exhibit seven, and this is a very, very important exhibit, is a map which illustrates the makeup of the neighborhood in which the property is located. Highlighted in yellow is the Hickey Street property. Penciled in, in sort of a very unusual border, is the RM-1 zone that's shown on this particular map. To the left, in that green field, green space, is the cemetery. And surrounding this RM-1 zone, you'll see all of the industrial and commercially-zoned properties. There's a plastics company, Rings End Distribution Center, Grainger Supply, which, by the way, this plastics company looks like the big building at the end of Hickey Street. And then, of course, you can see I-95 breaks off that area. So it's a very unique, very old section of town. I did some research in this RM-1 zone, and you'll see I wrote in 24 apartments up on Surf Avenue. And that parcel was approved for 24 residential apartments under the 830-G regulations in the state of Connecticut. They have not been built, but they have been approved. And then you'll see dots all across this particular zone. Each one of those dots represents a non-conforming lot in an RM-1 zone. That is, I counted them up, and I think I counted them accurately. There's 61 properties total, 45 are non-conforming. Three out of four, this property is conforming in size. Believe it or not, it's bigger than, well, not bigger than all these, but it's more conforming than every one of these that has a dot on it. And, of course, there's that one outlier, which is the apartment, proposed apartments. Exhibit eight, on the next page, is an approval given to the property owner directly behind the subject property, which is what we're talking about this evening. It's at 16 Goodwin Place. It's literally the rear property line of 3 Hickey, what we're talking about. It's the same size, 7,500 square feet. It's 75 by 100. And in 2018, the owner of this lot came before this very commission asking for the exact waiver we're asking for, and it was approved. And exhibit eight is the actual approval letter dated December 4, 2018. Exhibit nine is a photograph I took of that house. Now, I've been a real estate broker for 35 years, and I'm not a fan of whoever designed whatever's going on here because it's very asymmetrical, and I'm not sure what they were thinking. And I don't mean to be too critical. We'll see what the end result is. But it's really big, way bigger than what the proposal before you. But it was approved. Now, lastly, I'd like to address the staff review comments from Daniel Brennan. In his review letter, he states, quote, "The subject property conforms to the current zoning development standards for the RM-1 zone. The purpose of the RM-1 zone is to allow for multifamily housing, although very few properties in the RM-1 zone can meet the requirement of 10,000 square feet of lot area per 512." Now, Dan, that was a quote, but I think you meant to say 5,000 per unit because that's what the reg is for the two-family.
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. Brennan further adds that if the board is inclined to approve this application, it should consider the following condition of approval: that if rock ledge is required to be removed, a pre- and post-removal survey shall be conducted on all abutting properties to ensure that any incidental damage is tracked. Each abutting property owner shall be notified of the timing of the survey work and ledge removal. And I, after receiving the letter, I had a conversation with Mr. Tank, the applicant, and he advised me that he is in full agreement with that, and that makes absolute sense. So this concludes my presentation, and I am here to answer any questions that the chairman or the board may have.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll open it up to questions. Any commissioners have any questions?
Christine Doolan. I don't understand where the driveways are to be located on this.
Okay.
Because I did go by, and currently, it's a nice one-story house. There's a long driveway with a garage in back.
Okay, so if you flip back to exhibit number five...
Yep.
You'll see Hickey Street is on the right-hand side of the map. That would be here. This is Hickey Street. As you're driving down, the lot is on the left.
Yep.
And there's one driveway on the, I don't know, north, south, east, west, but on the, on one side of the multifamily, and one proposed driveway on the other side.
Oh, and that's it. It's not going into the backyard. Like, there currently is a driveway, garage.
No, the driveways will, the driveways are designed to be to the front of the house. Now, this does not mean that when it's developed, the driveway may not go, you know, may go a few feet further in, 10 feet further in, but there's no intention whatsoever to have the driveway go beyond the house or into the backyard or anything like that.
And so that's it, as far as parking. Everything else would be on street because the requirement was just one per...
Correct.
Space per unit.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Now, on the block plan, there is this stone wall depicted. My assumption is that's going to be removed, correct? Or no?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Unless it's necessary to.
What's the purpose of the wall? Just if, if this is all one lot, I'm wondering what the purpose...
It's just a short little grade change.
Grade change, okay.
For the record, that's Mr. Tank speaking.
Yes. All right, so there's a grade change there.
Yeah, that exists. The stone wall exists there now. If you haven't had the opportunity, Mr. Chairman...
I haven't walked the property now.
There's a short stone wall. I would say, if I had a guess, it's less than 24 inches. I would say it's between 12 and 16 inches tall. It's very cute, actually.
Yeah.
And I would hope that would remain.
Okay. No plans for a garage or any type of covering for the automobiles that would be in the driveway, correct?
No plans for a garage.
These are going to be for sale for occupant, or are they going to be rented? Do we know?
Well, you know, the market is in a state of flux, as you can all probably imagine. So we're not pretty, we're going to, I'm guessing it's going to be offered for sale as a two-family house if there's a high demand for those. There's also the possibility of condominiumizing it. There is not the opportunity to divide it, like the old duplexes in the South End. A lot of them, you'll see, and you can always tell them because one half will be blue and one half will be pink. And you're like, how did this happen? Well, that's not, that's when they would draw a line down the middle and then say, you own the right, you own the left. That is not an option anymore. So the only options are to sell as a multifamily house, which I cannot believe this price is in the demand of multifamily housing, and/or a condominiumized duplex, if you will.
It would still be a duplex, though.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
It would still be a duplex.
Right. It will, it's going to be side-by-side. Now, the structure will be the same, but we're going to have to see what the market will bear because we don't know three or four or six months from now what we're kind of soup we're going to be in.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the petition? In favor? Anyone here to speak in opposition of the petition? Come forward, please, and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Cora Barber. I live on 4 Hickey Street. I can pass this up to you. We, the undersigned, are opposed to the building of a multifamily home at 3 Hickey Street Lot-B because the width of Hickey Street cannot support any more on-street parking due to the lack of a standard width from the beginning to the end of the street. The width from the south-side curb to the north-side curb at the beginning of the street is 28 feet, and the width at the end of the street, from the south-side curb to the north-side curb, is 30 feet and 3 inches. The problem with this is the bottleneck width in the middle of the street with the narrowest distance of 21 feet and 4 inches occurring between house number three and house number four. At the beginning of the street, there's a curb in place, and at the end of the street, there is a curb at the storm drain. We believe, based on the wider distance between the curbs at the beginning and end versus the middle of the street, the town of Stratford must have at some point planned to widen Hickey Street. Without widening the street, even the addition of only a single-family house will create a higher volume of street parking congestion than what is already present. Nearby streets such as Avon Street, Allen Street, and Feely Street were all built with a width that allows on-street parking and businesses at the end to operate. We believe the town should make sure the street gets widened, making the developer responsible for widening Hickey Street. Last and most important, with the increased volume of street parking congestion, how will garbage be collected and how will snow get plowed? How are the police, fire trucks, and EMS going to respond quickly to emergencies if parked cars on each side will narrow the street and prevent large vehicle access? Will the EMS have to take a stretcher out of the ambulance and run to the last house on the street? We have included pictures to show the existing curbs and what this street looks like when people have guests and friends over for the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Marcia Standall. I'm 762 Surf Avenue. I live right on the corner of Hickey Street. And that street is, Hickey Street is terribly congested. And when the houses have company, the traffic is, you know, the parking is terrible. And it's my garage and my driveway, although my address at Surf Avenue is on Hickey Street. And sometimes I can barely get into the driveway to go into my garage. So it's terribly congested, and if these two driveways go in, that's at least four, at least four more cars, which is kind of on an angle like that from my property. So I just am totally against it. And when the delivery trucks come, like UPS and FedEx, they most likely will back down the street because there's nowhere for them to turn around. And when, one day, I had the FedEx truck parked in my driveway because he didn't, wasn't able to get down. It wasn't a big one. It's just a normal delivery. And he walked down the street to make the delivery because it was too congested. So mainly, that's why I and the others are against it. It does not warrant having a house of this size there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please, speaking in opposition.
My name is Gloria Barber. I live at 4 Hickey Street. I've lived there for 28 years, and I love my neighborhood. I have some signatures here from our neighbors who are also opposing this construction. There are nine driveways on our street because we have Marcia's home on Surf Avenue, that her driveway's on Hickey. 780 and 782 Surf Avenue have their driveway on Hickey Street. And the other homes, it totals nine driveways. And I think you have the statistics on how much parking is available because of the fire hydrant. We can't park in front of that. You have to park so many feet away from the curbs. And I really think that having another construction going on is just going to be too much for our little street to handle. It is a dead end, but you, it's not big enough to, like if you had a roundabout, you know, some of those have a cul-de-sac. Ours is a dead end, so it's very hard to turn around, especially when people are parked in their driveway. And it's, you know, we have had trouble on our street parked in front of our house. My son had his car hit because of problems with parking. So I hope you all take this into consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition? Opposition? Mr. DiCilio, you wish to rebut?
Yes, again, for the record, David DiCilio. I'd like to thank the neighbors for coming out this evening. One of the things I always like to do when sending out letters is putting the cell phone number of the applicant, and we have not heard of any of these concerns. We've heard nothing. But in light of these comments, which are all excellent, I was speaking with the applicant, Mr. Tank, and if you go back to the site plan, he is willing to lengthen the driveways and create a stipulation that there will be two cars of parking for each of the apartments. Therefore, I mean, I guess you can have five cars. A house can have as many cars as they want, but I think two cars, which is double the requirement, will, can be made a condition of an approval should the board decide that that is what they would like to do. Lastly, to one of the comments, or two of the comments, something is going to be built on this lot. What the decision that is going to be made tonight is as if it's going to be a one-family, which can be the same exact size as what's proposed, or even bigger, or a duplex, a side-by-side two-family, which is what the intention of the RM-1 zone is all about. I certainly understand... Thank God, that was not my phone. I certainly understand all of the concerns of the neighbors. I've been on the street several times, and I agree with them. It is a narrow street, and I would hope the town would widen the street because there is land to widen it. But this particular applicant is simply trying to create a couple of units that are in the more affordable price range for families or a two-family where someone can have some rental income to offset their mortgage. So thank you again for allowing me to rebut, and again, thank you to the neighbors for your input. I think it's, you know, well-heard.
Thank you. Is there, since there's no one else in favor, no one else opposed?
My name is Tim Barber. I live at 4 Industry. I don't think any of us suggested that nothing be built. We're suggesting there's an issue with the street and the volume of traffic, depending on how many people are living.
We can't pick up your comments, so why don't you just come to the... Yeah, name and address for the record, please.
Tim Barber, 4 Hickey Street. Nobody suggested that, we thought, nothing should be built on this property. We're concerned that, depending on how many people move into each unit, and the fact that the street does not come, is not in compliance with any other street in this town. I've never seen a street where it's only 21 feet wide in the middle, and if you park a car on each side of the road, nobody is getting by as my picture showed you. That's the issue, that's the issue that really has to be addressed here. One-family house is going to obviously drop the number of cars on the street, but if you don't, if the town does not, or is unwilling to fix that street, it doesn't... you don't, if the town does not, or is unwilling to fix that street, it doesn't, it doesn't matter if it's one unit or 10 units. It needs, it needs to be fixed. I don't know what else to say. I'm starting to repeat myself, but...
Thank you very much for your comment.
I thank you for your time.
Before adjourned the public hearing, I have a question for both, both parties. Mr. DeCilio, what time of the day were your pictures taken depicting Hickey Street?
That's a great question. I believe it was mid-morning, and I apologize for the lack of clarity. It was an overcast day, and I took them with my iPhone, not my regular camera, so...
Was it a weekday or a weekend?
Oh, it was a weekday. The truck, is my truck in the photograph, by the way. I have an old pickup truck, and I was going to the transfer station, which is not far from Surf Avenue there. So in one of the photos... And on the second page, you'll see a photo of my pickup truck. There was one car parked on the street at that time. I had since gone back to take a couple of other photos, but I chose not to use them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And the individual who submitted this package, can they come forward, please? The one with the pictures attached to it? The individual who submitted this package, it said "we, the undersigned"? Would that have the pictures? Yeah, could you come forward, please?
It was a young lady.
Oh, I see. I apologize. I think they both had the pictures on them.
It's a group project.
Approximately what time of the day, well, not, approximately what time of the day were these pictures taken of the street? Was it a weekday or a weekend?
That was New Year's Eve, for New Year's...
My time was New Year's Eve, and all the other ones were New Year's Day.
Okay. Thank you. Your package here saying "we, the undersigned" also had the Pope photos in it, so I assume they are the same photos, or were they taken at different times?
Yes. I've also, when I spoke to our neighbors, we've counted how many cars we all own, and it's 19 that we own. We don't drive them all at once, but we all, you know, each house has kids, grown children who live with them, who work, and, you know, we have extra cars. We have a car for, you know, dump run, car for work, car for church. So we counted how many we own on the street, 19, so that's what was, you know, worrying us about having multifamily housing, because, you see, when you have company over, everything flows into the street.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, the chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this petition.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to close public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Lulawon, do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Gibson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing on this petition is closed, 5-0. We may discuss this at our administrative session at the end of our public hearing. Mr. Brennan, my understanding is, is 885 Wood End Road, items number 2, as well as administrative 1, 2, have requested a postponement? The chair will entertain a motion to accept the postponement until next month without prejudice for petitions number 2 and administrative items 1 and 2.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mrs. Llewellyn, do I hear a second? Second by Ms. Gibson, discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes 5 to 0. There are no other items on the public hearing agenda. Chair entertains a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Motion by Mr. Llewellyn, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Witham. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. The public hearing is closed at 7:34. We will now move into the administrative session, starting at 7:34. First item on the agenda, I believe, is the approval of the minutes, if I'm not mistaken. Let me find my agenda. It's buried over here. Ah, there we go. Items listed on the public hearing, my apology. The chair will entertain a motion to take, there's only one item that we currently have table, and that is the petition for number 3, Hickey Street. So the chair will entertain any motion on that behalf.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to take 3 Hickey Street, Lot B, off the table.
You have a motion to take it off the table, do I hear a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, chair votes aye, it's off the table for discussion. Would anyone like to begin?
Well, I'm familiar with the area.
Okay.
For many years, and I understand what they're saying, what the residents are saying and the homeowners there. I just don't, I feel like the housing and what they presented is acceptable. The street is a whole other matter, in my opinion. I'm not sure what the zoning thinks, but that's just my thoughts on it. I understand growing families and people living in the homes together, but there is a need for housing, and it seems like a good project, so I, I'm not sure. I would like to hear from other people on the board.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Ms. Doolan?
I thank Mr. Tank for wanting to increase the parking spaces. I thank you very much for that. But this is not just an issue for Hickey Street. I mean, it's, it's my problem, like, all over Stratford, everywhere, not just Stratford. Bridgeport Parking is a nightmare. That, I would love to see the regulations changed, period. I'm not sure how to do that, but be that as it may, I just wanted to, I certainly understand, you know, even with your three-bedroom unit, you know, having two spaces, at some point, you're going to have three cars in each house, at least, and, because everyone has more than one car. So I think, you know, the housing, it is needed. I'm just concerned about parking, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Doolan. Ms. Witham?
I kind of was also wondering about the parking issue. I mean, is that really under our power, or whatever you want to say? Can someone help me with that? Because, I mean, the house situation doesn't seem a problem to me, and I understand the parking situation and the road not being wide enough, and I sympathize with that, but I'm not sure if that's something that is for us to decide, as far as that goes. Can someone help me with that? Dan, maybe?
Dan, you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, typically zoning board of appeals is, only concentrates on private property. It's a state statute that, whether it's a planning commission or a zoning commission, they can't make requirements for developers to do off-site improvements. So that would be, you know, could be sidewalks, could be street widening. What I would recommend to the residents of Hickey Street is to first talk to our engineering department and see what sort of options there are. From them, they might advise you to bring it to one of your council members and get it in front of the city, the town council.
Dan, a technical question for you. This application, was it submitted to all departments, including public safety?
Yeah, it gets submitted to us, and then we refer them out for comments.
Were there any comments that, you would have provided them to us, I'm sure, but I assume there were no comments from anyone in public safety?
Correct.
No one from engineering?
None.
And as I understand it, for the members of the commission, the applicant has indicated that they will, if we put it as a part of an approval process, extend the driveway for two cars for off-site?
Excuse me, Chair? I would also recommend the pre- and post-blast survey.
Yes, the pre- and post-blast survey, which was a part of that discussion. So if anyone wants to make a motion to either approve, deny, or table, Ms. Doolan?
I have a question. I understand what Mr. Brennan said about suggesting that they go to our engineering department and have them look. I feel bad that the onus gets put on them, but is that something that should be done? And we would wait for their response before we vote on this?
Well, as I understand it, it's not within our purview, so to delay it based upon further comment from public departments would not be within our purview. The state statute does not require us to take, does not allow us, really, to take into consideration off-street parking from the standpoint that the dwelling, we've had an indication from the owner of the property that he'll create off-site parking for a maximum of four cars, which is within the regulation. What we are able, what we have to do here is deal with what the regulations that we have in front of us. It is unfortunately not our purview to discuss whether or not the town should do X, Y, and Z to the street. That's not something that we can mandate in any approval. Ms. Doolon?
Uh, yeah, are you guys set with questions?
I had another question, and it's just about the properties that everyone has. Did ever, anyone ever think about making U-turns in their driveways, or is that something that Stratford doesn't approve? I mean, I know it's really difficult when it's a dead-end street, or there's commercial property at the end, and there's trucks, when it's a busy time, but there's maybe some other suggestions for parking on their own properties. That's just something I was thinking of, but I do want to approve the, make a motion to approve.
Yeah, one of the, one of the complexities involved in that would be lot coverage. If we start paving over all the lot, then we're going to get into a situation where we're going to require a variance for paving on a lot, not enough open space.
That makes sense, thank you.
All right, so I think we've discussed it. Ms. Witham?
One other question. So the unit, or the 16 Goodwin Place that was approved in 2018, similar situation. There was a condition in there that each unit shall be owner-occupied. Is that something that's going to be, do you expect the owner, you know, to be owner-occupied in this situation?
Well, I think that, based upon the testimony that was presented, the, by Mr. DeCilio, they would like to sell it as a two-family house, obviously encourage it, but we can't, the anticipation is, is that due to the current market conditions, that may not be feasible. They will sell it as a two-family house, but it may not be feasible for the owner occupied both sides. There may be an owner occupant on one side, or rent the other side to offset the mortgage. I think that if we were to try to make that a stipulation, it would probably have adverse effects to the marketability of the property. But that's not, again, that's not our concern from that standpoint, if the board chooses to do so.
I was just wondering, because that's the stipulation in the property directly behind.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, if it was, if it was included in a stipulation for approval there, we could do it here. I don't believe that was challenged in court, and anything found inaccurate about that, which means that we should be able to do that, but if that's what the board wants to do, and that's, as a, as a part of an approval process, you can do that. You could add that in as part of the approval.
I think I'd like to see the same with this property as the one behind it. Is there any reason why we shouldn't do that? Dan, can you weigh in on that?
I, I had thought about this when I was doing the staff report, and I had questioned to myself the actual legality of it, which may be something we want to leave open to ask the town attorney.
Yeah, and my apology, I did not anticipate this being a difficult petition. The town attorney asked for permission not to be here this evening because he recently, he and his wife gave birth to their first child. So he has a two-week-old in the house, and he wanted to be, stay close, and I, I gave him permission to take the night off because I didn't anticipate that that would be, his services would be needed with regards to that.
Does anybody remember why in 2018 we made that a stipulation on the Goodwin Place address?
None of us were here. I didn't, I didn't get seated until 2020. 2021 and 22, 23, so I didn't get seated on this particular board until 2020.
And Dan, do you have any recollection?
I don't. All I know is it was owned by Habitat for Humanity at the time, so I don't know if they keep possessions of their property and then rent them out, or if they eventually turn them over.
Yeah, there are some interesting conditions on this 16 Goodwin approval, such as, well, obviously...
A window.
A small storage shed for each unit.
Maybe because there's no garage, and they didn't want stuff all over the place?
Decorative windows and architectural features, rock ledge I can completely understand with, and the entire rear yard shall be loomed and seeded where rock ledge does not remain. Yeah, that, that goes with coverage area, so, okay. I guess I could see that one. The one that I don't understand the rationale of the commission at the time was the owner occupied unless it had to do with Habitat for Humanity, and there was maybe some testimony at the time that there were issues with other properties that they had developed. I'm not sure. On top of which, if I'm, I'm somewhat familiar with Goodwin Place. It's not something, it's not an area I go to on a frequent basis, mind you, but I think it is more of a structure, as was previously alluded to by the applicant, that it was more of a deviation between the two, rather than this would have to be, call it fee simple, it'd have to be a condo-type situation. So, so far, there's no demarcation, so if it's owner-occupied on both sides, they would have to come to an agreement to share the expenses for maintenance and things of that nature, because they can't cut a property lying down it, and it won't be taxed separately. It'd be taxed as one individual block. I see your red lights on, Mr. Lulawon.
So, Mr. Chairman, via yourself to the zoning officer, should we look to move forward with this petition as an approval, putting conditions on the conditions, or should we have town attorney input and then act at a later date?
I don't, I think we put Mr. Brennan in a very precarious position by asking him to do that. I think probably at this point in time, what we could do is entertain a motion to table and refer...
The conditions from 16 Goodwin Place to the town attorney for his review and comment?
Excellent. So I'll take that as a motion to table.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
With these questions to be forwarded to the town attorney. So a motion to table, forwarding questions. Do we hear a second? Second by Ms. Gibson, discussion on the motion. Hearing on, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not opposed. I'm in favor.
Okay, so that means it's the motion to table passes 4-1, with questions being referred to the town attorney. So, Mr. Brennan, if you'd be so kind as to refer those questions to the town attorney, I'd appreciate it. Ms. Doolan? So for the people in the audience, it's been tabled till the next administrative session. We welcome you to come back, at which point in time we hope to have the town attorney's input on the conditions that may be put on the property. That having been said, we will now move forward with the rest of the regular meeting agenda, as there's no other items on the table, for the approval of the minutes of November 1st, 2023.
Motion to approve.
First, let me correct the agenda. Those are approval of the minutes, November 1st, 2022.
Good catch, Mr. Chairman.
See, that's why I get paid the big bucks.
That's why you got the big chair.
That's why I have the big chair.
Motion to approve with a date as amended.
Motion by Mr. Llewellyn.
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Witham. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, 5-0. Cam site plan review, we were going to have one, we don't now, so that's gone. Erosion and sediment, we were going to have one, we don't now. Members' concerns and comments? Other items? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn till our next session, February 7th, 2023.
Still move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Llewellyn, second by Ms. Witham. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 5-0. We are off the record at 7:48. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.